President.
Gavin Furlick and Councilmember Randy Kelly have excuse absences.
Thank you. Before we run Subcommittee in minutes, please.
To the Subcommittee on Minutes, to the Common Council of the City of South Bend, the Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the June 12th, 2017 meeting of the Council and found them to be correct, therefore we recommend the same be approved.
We move to accept the report from the Subcommittee on Minutes.
Second. All in favor. Aye. All opposed. Thank you. At this time, would you now hand any reports from city offices? Committee of the whole, I'm sorry.
Special business.
I skipped over. Special business.
You first.
Ms. Fowler, would you please read 1735?
I'll take that one.
And I'll turn it over to Vice President Oliver Davis.
Cool.
1735, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, celebrating the 50th anniversary of Leaper Park Arts Fair in the City of South Bend.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Our presenter is President Tim Scott.
Hello, Tim Scott. 711 Forest Avenue, South Bend, Indiana. I think we'll do this kind of back-to-back, so.
Okay, cool.
Resolution 464517, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, celebrating the 50th anniversary of the Leaper Park Art Fair in the City of South Bend. Whereas, in approximately 1,900, Leaper Park, due to the efforts of many, begun, but begun by Alexis Coquiller, the founding father of the City of South Bend, Indiana, a beautiful tree-filled section of land located to south of the bend in Saint Joseph River, north of the city, and designated recreational purposes for the City of South Bend. Whereas, after extensive development in the site, including construction of a zoo, a lily pond in 1902, the relocation of the historic Pierre Navarre cabin in 1904, later moved once again within the park in 1960. In addition to the tennis courts in 1905, formal flower gardens in 1922, the park, which came to span both sides of Michigan Street in South Bend, became a popular spot for folks to gather and enjoy various amenities. And whereas, Leaper Park was designated in 1996 a local historic landmark by the historic preservation of South Bend, Indiana and Saint Joseph County, Indiana. And whereas, 1967, Leaper Park began, became the home of the annual event sponsored by the Saint Joe Valley Watercolor Society designated at Leaper Park Art Fair. A much anticipated annual event that has grown in stature, a fact that caused it to be rated in 2015 as number 70 best art, arts show on the list of the top 200 best shows in the entire country by the Sunshine Artist Magazine, in which draws some 125 artists each year from around the United States. And whereas, in addition, the Saint Joe Watercolor Society, due to participation in Leaper Park Art Fair, also annually awards scholarships in deserving to art students at Indiana University in South Bend to further the student education in the fine field of art. And whereas, the guidance of the Director Judy Ladd, the Leaper Park Art Fair has survived many adverse events that had threatened the cancellation of the art fair several times throughout the 50-year span of its existence in Leaper Park, including severe weather conditions, road construction, and the economic recession that caused both buyers and artists to refrain from participation, while maintaining the art fair's high standard of show exclusively, professionally, and produced artwork. And whereas, prizes are awarded for the best show in categories such as watercolor paintings, clay and sculpture work, photography, multimedia glass jewelry, reflecting the diversity of the works displayed at Leaper Park, which caused it to become so popular, annual trash not only for South Bend residents, but art lovers everywhere taking place in scenic historic setting. Now therefore resolved, the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, as follows. Session 1, South Bend Common Council proudly recognizes Leaper Park Art Fair for its longstanding tradition in the community enjoyable as much anticipated annual event for the many residents in the city and beyond, and for the passion and excellence exhibited by the Saint Joe Watercolor Society and the artists who participate in the art fair each year, along with citizens who enjoy the benefit of having prestigious art show in their local community, and in particular. The Council is honored to publicly commend the Leaper Park Art Fair for its dedication and continued tradition in the exhibit of fine arts in many forms throughout the past 50 years in the City of South Bend for all citizens to enjoy. Section 2, the Common Council notes, because of Leaper Art Fair's dedication to excellence, countless numbers of individuals have enjoyed top-quality artwork in many forms throughout our wonderful community. We hope this longstanding tradition continues for many years to come, as it becomes a permanent and highly anticipated yearly event which many look forward to each year. This resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after the adoption by the Common Council and approval by the Mayor. So, I am absolutely proud that this is within the first district. I would like to do something a little unique. I think we should read the next resolution, kind of as a combination of the two, and then have comments publicly on both of them.
That's fine.
If you're fine with that, Vice President.
Yes, I'm at peace.
And Judy Ladd, if you would please come up to.
We can, my thing is, can we just have our clerk to go ahead and read that one? And then read and vote on them separately afterwards? Okay, go ahead.
17-38, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend thanking and honoring Judy Ladd for diligently serving area residents for the past 25 years and wishing her continued success as she retires from service as Director of the Leaper Park Arts Fair.
Okay, now we have our presenter, Ms. Joan.
Thank you. Whereas Judy Ladd is an accomplished artist who works in porcelain and clay and watercolor media. She has served as the Director of the Leaper Park Art Fair for the past 25 years and is now retitering from her position as Director of the annual event. Judy is a tireless advocate for the art fair and her boundless energy has brought the continued success the art fair currently enjoys as a result of her selfless efforts. And whereas Judy graduated from Western Michigan University with a BA in art and received her MFA from the University of North Nam, she worked at the South Bend Art Center, teaching child and adult art classes, in addition to acting as the faculty representative to the Board at the Art Center for several years. Judy's first teaching assignment was first grade at Darn Elementary, after which she graduated to LaSalle High School as an art instructor there. Oh, as an art instructor, pardon me. There, she worked as the academic decathlon coach, served as the Chairman of the Art Department at the school, and worked on scholastic art awards where her students won the third Congressional Art Competition, after which they traveled to Washington, DC. And whereas, while working at LaSalle High School, Judy opened a co-op art gallery called Gallery in the Garrett, located in the former Cam's Brewery, which had been repurposed to become the 100 Center, a busy retail area housing 30 local artists. Gallery on the Garrett was located in the 100 Center for 13 years, until Judy relocated the business to the East Bank on the Raceway of the Saint Joe River in South Bend. Judy later transferred to Mishawaka High School to work as an Assistant Principal for nine years, after which she retired to concentrate on the production of her own artwork. And whereas, throughout the years Judy has served in many capacities with Indiana Arts Organization, including being actively involved as a member of the Saint Joe Valley Watercolor Society. During her involvement with the Saint Joe Valley Watercolor Society, Judy Ladd met many wonderful artists. Gloria O'Brien was instrumental in persuading Judy to participate in the Leaper Park Art Fair with her silkscreen designs, and Judy felt honored to be included in the prestigious event. And whereas Judy eventually came to serve as the Director of the Leaper Park Art Fair, thanks to her involvement in the Saint Joe Valley Watercolor Society and with the assistance of its members, Judy has managed to maintain the Leaper Park Art Fair, a viable event, through numerous eras of adversity, including several national financial downturns for the past 25 years. She has received substantial support and assistance from Joan Twiwell and Howard Scott during her tenure as Director, and the Leaper Park Art Fair recently celebrated its 50th anniversary this year on June 17th through 18th of 2017. Whereas Judy has dedicated her life to the furtherance of arts throughout the Michiana area for more than 30 years, thanks in part to Judy's efforts, the Leaper Park Art Fair, a juried exhibition, continues to showcase many wonderful artists in various media and has been featured in the Sunshine Artist Magazine as one of the top 200 art shows in the country. Judy teaches classes in Florida and still participates in many top-rated art shows. Her work is treasured in many collections throughout the United States. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, as follows. Section 1, on behalf of the citizens of South Bend, Indiana, South Bend Common Council proudly and publicly congratulates and thanks Judy Ladd, who has willingly and faithfully served as the Director of the Leaper Park Art Fair for the past 25 years, and for her innumerable contributions to the arts in our community. Section 2, the Common Council proudly recognizes Judy Ladd as a valued member of our community and as someone who has selflessly given her time and her efforts to further the flourishing of the arts in the City of South Bend, Indiana, by working tirelessly as the Director of the Leaper Park Art Fair. Section 3, the Common Council and the citizens of South Bend wish Judy Ladd continued success with the production of her artwork and all of her many other accomplishments, as she enjoys her retirement from her service as the Director of the Leaper Park Art Fair. Congratulations. And section 4, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its adoption by the Common Council and approved by the Mayor.
At this time, okay, we hear from you and then we hear, we open up to the public to hear other people's comments.
I just want to thank you very much. It's been my pleasure and I will always stay within the arts, but I love promoting the arts in the South Bend and I have done that from day one. But thanks to so many people that have helped me and to you people who have graciously participated in the Leaper Park Art Fair and were one of our patrons, it's been my pleasure and I thank you so much for the award. I didn't really, I didn't really know I was getting this, so I'm really too embarrassed. Ralph didn't tell me a whole bunch of stuff. He just told me a lot. So here I am, and I'm overwhelmed, as you can tell, but thank you very much for all your help and for this award. I appreciate it. I did it out of a love of art and I hope we all continue to have love of art and I hope we all continue to go Leaper Park Art Fair. I will always be there, but just not with a golden thumb. Thumbs up for me and thumbs down for anybody else. I don't have to worry about it, but I will make sure, and I said this to the Saint Joe Valley Watercolor people, I will make sure that that continues. So, thank you very, very much. I appreciate it.
At this time, we will hear from those in the public first, and then we'll come back to the Council for comments. Anyone who would like to speak in favor of this resolution to share works? There we go. Thank you.
Good evening. Aaron Perry, Executive Director of Vendors, Parks and Arts.
Who?
321 East Walzer Street. Vendors, Parks and Arts, this hits two of the three categories pretty heavily. I got to speak out of Leaper Park to the artists just before the art fair began, and I said to them, the thing that we all know, Leaper Park is never more vibrant and alive than when the Leaper Park Art Fair is in full swing. So thanks to you for your leadership in making that a great place for our city and a great tradition, but also in terms of the arts, advancing the arts in our community has been such an important part of who we are as a society and how we outwardly show what we stand for. And under Judy's leadership and the tradition that exists in Leaper Park Art Fair, we're able to show that in really great ways. Finally, I'd like to publicly thank Judy and the Leaper Park Art Fair folks who donated a bench on behalf of the 50-year tradition that now proudly sits on the riverbank right at the Leaper Park. So I strongly support these resolutions.
Wonderful. Anybody else from my city? Okay, at this time, seeing no one, we will then turn this, anybody in opposition? Okay, moving forward. All right. We'll start with our second district and we roll on down.
Okay.
Separately.
Pardon?
There are two resolutions.
Okay.
Hold on separately.
No, no, we're not going to vote on right now. We're just going to give them comments, and then we will vote on them. I do thank you for reminding me of that. So we want to hear comments, and then we'll come back and we'll vote on them separately, okay? And since you all two are down there, you can also share your comments from down there too. Okay, go.
Just very briefly, I want to share with you, Ms. Ladd, I'm just meeting you, but you're the person to thank clearly. There was a time when, in 2011, my husband was confined to the hospital for over two months. And, you know, as anybody who's gone through any sort of illness like that, you can understand how incredibly hard that is to, you know, be a vibrant person in the community and out and then being stuck in a hospital bed. It's really, we had an opportunity one day, and it happened to be that the Leaper Park Art Fair was there. So I stuck him in his wheelchair and we escaped to the park. And I have to tell you that even today, I mean, I was so, because neither of us are really like big artsy people or whatever, but he certainly would have preferred to be at a car show, but the opportunity to get out, the fact that it was that close to the hospital was really a lifesaver for him. It changed him, it changed me, and we do our best to make it every single year after that. So I just want to have a personal thank you for how amazing an experience anyone can have, whether you are an art aficionado or if you're just a regular old person who can't draw a stick figure. It's certainly something that has been very important to my family, so I want to thank you.
Wonderful. Dr. Ryan?
Yeah, since we're addressing two resolutions, congratulations to everyone who's been involved in the Leaper Park Art Fair for the last 50 years. When my wife and I first got back to town, I think in 1978, that was one of the first downtown events we could really remember. That was one of the first downtown events that we could really remember that stuck in our mind. There've been a number of them, as you recall, if you've lived here for a long enough time, but the Leaper Park Art Fair is one that has persevered and improved and always been something we looked forward to. So to everyone who was involved in that from the beginning, thank you. And to Ms. Ladd, who's been a pedant for the last 25 years, certainly, congratulations to you. I know there were storms, I know there were bad days. My wife actually made most of those, and the way you managed to, you folks managed to pull it off, takes a lot of effort and dedication. We thank you for that. My wife is also an art teacher in my profession, and she has very much helped foster wherever possible, her students, you know, a concern for, a love for, and appreciation of art, and this has been very helpful, let's recongratulate that. So thank you on behalf of anyone who's ever been involved.
Oh, citizens of South Bend could never repay all of those people who make the Leaper Park Art Fair the event that it's become. It so enriches everybody, and it's just something that I personally look forward to each summer and probably never realized who was behind making all that happen. But I know that it takes a lot of dedication and a lot of people and someone to stir the pot and make it all happen, and thank you for that.
I would like to personally thank you for your commitment to the arts and especially Leaper Park. So, our city is stronger because of individuals such as yourself who have given time, years to ensure that those things that we come to love and enjoy is because of citizens such as yourself and others who have been very supportive of the Leaper Park. So congratulations, but also congratulations on your retirement. I don't see you as a person who's really going to retire, but it sounds great, but congratulations and job well done.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So this is a 30-plus, we won't go how far back, but 30-plus year reunion. Judy was the Art Director for LaSalle High School, my high school, and a number of my peers went through your program, but what you may not know, that one of my favorite hallways at LaSalle High School during my tenure was the Art Department hallway. Fabulous artwork that she was instrumental behind, and as I've said, she inspired many artists of my generation and going forward, and certainly enriched my life and the life of other citizens in the City of South Bend. So we are indebted to you for your efforts. The word tireless was woven throughout this, but I'm also certain none of these were paid positions. So, again, we are indebted to you for the time and your talent, but also doing that with just such generosity, whether it was the art fair, whether it was bringing along students within our schools. But you are a model of someone, you know, who works within our school system, and the rest of us are like, who knew? Because you're doing and you're touching things throughout the community that will have lasting impact. So I want to thank you for that commitment you gave and have given throughout your tenure here in South Bend, and wish you the best of luck in your retirement years.
Thank you.
And just a few comments. I live on Forest Avenue, just up from Leaper Park. We've been here 24 years. I have a degree in photography, photojournalism at the University of Missouri and studied fine art photography as well, and it really brings a sense of community, these type of events, and this is part of that quality of life that we have within our city, that you wouldn't get out in the middle of nowhere sometimes. And I appreciate all of the attention to that. I mean, I remember the very first year that I lived here, we walked down the Leaper Park Art Fair, and it was just amazing to have this so close that you're not traveling, you know, that it's something walkable within your city and such an event within your city. And anything that we can do, because the arts are getting squashed so poorly in our public schools, all our schools, wherever, you know, from spoken word to dance and music to, you know, glass blowing to sculptures to painting, we need to help promote that wherever we can and however we can, whether it's individuals, it's parents, teachers, however, this just accentuates that whole goal that needs to be out there. We cannot forget about it, and it's beautiful. I mean, art is emotion. It evokes good emotions, bad emotions, it evokes emotion, and that's the key to the art community that makes our lives better. So, thank you so much for that.
Thank you. Mary Ann Cole says, "Art is as natural as sunshine and as vital as nourishment." And you have really helped to give a picture to this whole community and paint not only years of steadfast leadership. I had a chance to talk with you at a wedding last year.
Yes, indeed.
Yes, indeed. And I really appreciated your tenacity to not give up. You are the kind of a person that will find a way when there's no way, you will keep on when other folk have quit, and you will move forward when others have given back. And that's what I really, I left that wedding that day we had and sat there, and I thought about that. And as we were getting this resolution, I was thinking about the time we sat and met. And that one meeting there, I can still remember the conversation like it was there, because just your energy and everything you put together there, and you leave an impression on people that helps to change them in a positive way. So I want to thank you, and I'm glad I had a chance to meet you that day. And so looking forward to you. Only problem I had with doing the resolution together, the first one I was going to vote for, the second one I wasn't, because I didn't want her to retire. Nah, go for it, but I'm good.
You are right, I won't be retired, but I won't be totally retired.
I would say.
Something I do, I never give up. There's always a way, but if you're fighting for the art, you have to continue to fight, because the best thing we have is creativity in our lives, and we need to nurture that not only for ourselves, but our children. So, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Now we were voting these separately. Yes?
I think you can move for the separate approval of both.
Okay.
I would make a motion that this be adopted, a separate approval for both, a single motion for a separate approval for each. By acclamation, thank you.
Okay. We are at peace with that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. It is carried. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Congratulations again. Thank you. Nice to see you too.
Thank you very much.
Want to say a picture with that? I'll turn it back over to President Scott.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, reports from city offices, we do not have any reports from city offices. Angela Cotters is in the audience, representing the Mayor. Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion for a rise and join Committee of the whole.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
We don't necessarily have to rise, we just move it over.
Vice President Davis is running Committee of the whole.
That's good. The Committee of the whole is now in session. The Committee of the whole is supporting the council meeting, where the Common Council sits as a committee. The title of each proposed ordinance is read by City Clerk, followed by a report from the committee chairperson of the standing committee, which is held in a public hearing on the bill. The chairperson has announced the committee advisory's recommendation. We have heard the second readings on this this afternoon, and now we will proceed. Finally, yes, in terms of Bill number 2517.
Chair.
Yes, we have a.
I'd like to make a motion to send 2517 to continue indefinitely.
Okay. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It will be continued indefinitely. As requested by the petitioner, that is correct. Now, committee will hear from Bill number 2717, Ms. Fowler.
Public hearing on an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 3515 Western Avenue, Councilmanic District Number Two, in the City of South Bend, Indiana.
Chair. The motion here is a substitute area.
Second.
All in favor, they hear the substitute.
Aye.
All opposed? It is carried. We have our, oh, committee this afternoon, the Zone Analysis Committee met this afternoon, and we bring this bill, substitute bill to you with a favorable recommendation. And now we will hear from our report from area plan, please state your name and address and proceed.
David Stanton, Area Plan Commission, 11th floor of this building. The petitioner is requesting a zone change from GB, General Business District, to MU, Mixed Use District. On the site is a retail establishment. To the north is a single-family home zone, S of two, single-family and two-family district. To the east is a retail store, Zone GB, General Business District. To the south and to the west, across Western Avenue and then next door to the building, the establishment is Zone MU, Mixed Use District. The site includes an existing two-story retail, excuse me, retail building situated near the middle of the block. Only a portion of the building, approximately 4,500 square feet footprint, is proposed to be rezoned. The remainder of the building will continue to be Zoned GB, General Business District. The shared parking area is located to the east of the site. This is just the front edge of the building, looking straight on to the building, and then this is capturing a photo of the site looking east down Western Avenue. This comes to you from the Area Plan Commission with a favorable recommendation. Rezoning the site to MU, Mixed Use will allow for the re- Rezoning the site to MU Mixed Use will allow for the reuse of an existing structure in a manner consistent with the comprehensive plan. We'll have you to answer any questions.
Okay. Do you have any questions for Mr. Stanton at this time?
Good.
Okay. I'm at least then. We would like to then have our presenter to please come before us, share us her name and address, and give us a brief summary of what she shared with us from here.
My name is Zaire Joy. I am the property owner of 3515 West Western. We are planning to open up a flea market called Limited Time Flea Market. It will have multiple items from electronics to kids' toys to home goods to drones, furniture, pretty much anything you can think of in the store. We purchase our items online from a site called Quantum Commodities. It's like a bidding order. They send us every day, different, manifest. We order the trucks. They usually have them here within two days when we stop the store that way. Soon as zoning is approved and we get our everything straightened out with this, we'll try to open, shoot for a hobby for July 1st.
Okay. Wonderful. Any questions from our presenter?
Where are you loading docks? And where do you, where we take in items?
There is, in the back, if you can see, there's the garage door. And that, the whole building is ours. So, we own, it's a front door here in the front, and there's also another garage door that lifts in the back. We're probably doing it in the back, but we're not probably chatting or anything. Thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none at this time? We appreciate you. And we're now, we're beginning to, you don't have to sign in here, we, that's not the area plan you do, you're good. We will then now open it up for those who would like to speak in favor, speak in favor of this resolution. Please come forth, state your name and address, and share your thoughts. Those who would like to speak in favor. Seeing none at this time? Those who would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none at this time? We closed the public portion, and we come back to the council for comments, questions, or a motion.
Chair, I make a motion to send this to the full council in favor.
Suspended version.
Substitute version.
Second. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same side. It will then move forth in a few more minutes with a favorable recommendation. All right. Thank you. Now, we move to 3517. Can we have a weekend on that?
3517. Public hearing on an ordinance to vacate the following described property, east-west alley from Park Avenue to first north-south alley between Mantoo and Riverside.
I appreciate that. Now, we will then hear from Mr. John Gowardy, who chairs that committee, for the recommendation from them this afternoon.
The Public Works and Property Vacation Committee held a hearing on this. For lack of a quorum of the committee, we were not able to take action, so we sent it without recommendation.
Okay, so it's being sent here without recommendation at this time. Therefore, now we are going to hear from the petitioner, and could she please come forth, state her name and her address, and proceed with her comments.
Thank you. My name is Karen Gindell. I live at Dave Pretty on Park Avenue. I'm here with my next-door neighbor, Dave Faulkner, to request that the city vacate the alley, the east-west alley between Mantoo and Riverside. My own concerns are that the alley is narrow, as far as I can tell, I've looked at other alleys. My own living room wall is six feet from the first track of the, of the, or driving through. My downstairs elbows are three feet from that, from that, from the driving space, and my shed is even closer to this. My concern is that especially in the winter, cars can slip, and I have actually helped people get unstuck from the alley. I have helped to shovel them out on a couple of occasions. I spoke with my, many of my next-door neighbors about this. There's one person who uses the, who uses the alley daily, otherwise only occasionally, and they do not feel it would be a inconvenience to drive a little bit farther so that we could close the, we could close the alley. So, there's the safety to the house, that's my main concern. I feel there would also be improved security, being able to block off cars, although we would like to maintain a pedestrian right-of-way, so people walking in the neighborhood can do this, can take that route. There are minor inconveniences, I guess, on the aesthetic level, if you were talking about parts. There's a lot of dust that gets sort of sent up there from not that much exposed dirt, but it's dusty. The ruts are getting deeper, we could fill them, of course, but again, the leeway is not very wide between the actual driving path and either one of our houses. Dave has a retaining wall that is very, also very close to his side of the alley, near my living room space, and he has said that many of the stones of that retaining wall get dislodged when people cut corners. Also, the trash barrels are knocked over when people are coming around the corner, and things like that. I've not had any specific damage to my house, but I was just worried about what could happen, and those are the current guarding issues. Our plans are, if this is approved, we'd be to landscape. And I've looked at many alleys around, around my neighborhood that have been closed, some you can't even tell that there wasn't that way there, because the two, the two abutters have done really nice landscaping, and it seems quite possible that we could, that we could do that. It seems to me as if very many of the east-west alleys are very tight to maneuver, that it would actually be safer for everybody to drive straight, you know, through the north-south one, and then we could, we could clean up and improve those, those side alleys as it is.
Questions, comments from the council members at this time for our petitioner, Ms. White. You have, let's get into it. Let's start with Ms. President.
I think, you know, one of the things we talked about in committee, after having viewed the property, the overgrowth, and on the one side of the vegetation that's growing into the alley, it does make it feel very narrow. One of the things you mentioned was that people kind of use this alley like in turning, because other alleys are even more narrow, making it hard to pass. I also noted that I have a similar experience with my own home. Actually, my bedroom is like right, like probably three feet from where people walk in, so I can certainly empathize with that. I think my concern is, you know, if everybody who had that problem, who vacated all those alleys, you know, what does that mean? Not that we're setting a precedent here tonight, but, you know, there are inconveniences, I think, on both sides, so, you know, those are kind of the questions that I have, you know, is it something we want to completely kind of take away from the public access and being able to, to access that particular right-of-way out? But that's just what my concern is.
Thank you. Anything else, Bill?
Yes. So, the exit to the north is on Riverside Drive, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then alternatively on Manitow, or Manitoba?
Mantoo.
Mantoo, I'm sorry. Help me out with anything exiting to the west on that entire stretch. To the west on the north-south alley or on... On the north-south alley, yeah. Is there any other exit to the west to Forest Avenue? And I'm sorry, my research didn't go further out to the whole length of the alley.
Well, right. There is, there is a, an alley that goes east-west that is clear to the west, that is near to Riverside.
Okay, so mid-block roughly up from where your alley is?
Three houses up.
Okay. So, and I do have a bit of a concern overall with the amount of traffic if exiting on Riverside Drive with that, you know, curved and coming up from that area. So, at the Board of Public Works, was there any consideration about the amount of traffic? I know we've identified one individual who has use on a daily basis.
Yes.
But what is your overall sense of traffic in general, other than that frequent user? I mean, how...
Very occasional, and one is a neighbor to whom I spoke, and he, he has used it, but he started going a different way, and he was amenable to that being, to that being closed. That's Pete Farro, who's, he's a few doors to the north. Otherwise, my immediate partner, the Timon Terry days, they actually have a garage that is on the north, the north-south alley, and they were quite in favor of closing this, of closing this also. I didn't quite answer, so there, there, the alley, the extension to the west that follows from my segment of the alley is, is overgrown, and only walkers can go through there. So, that has been effectively closed off. And so, there's at least one other, it's paved, and it's reasonably wide, but, but again, you have to, and you wouldn't destroy anything, but you might, you might cut a corner going, you know, going around the other one to Forest Avenue, so. Yeah. Thank you.
Dr. White. Questions or comments? You guys are planning on landscaping, but maybe a walking path between...
It would be, that was our idea, yes.
Okay.
We would like, there are many walkers.
Yep, there are, and I'm one of them. Also, is your trash pickup in the alley still, or is it out front?
Mine's in the, both of ours are in the alley.
Okay. And they only use the long length of alley?
Yes.
They don't use the side alleys at all?
No, no. The city never uses side alleys.
Okay. That's all I got for now. I have comments later on.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. The abutting property owner to the north has a garage that opens to what would be the vacated part of the alley. And, excuse me, how do you assume that you've met with that property owner, and you've reached some accommodation, how he would be able to maintain access?
Yes, he's actually the other person petitioning with me. Originally, when I asked for the, for filling out the forms, I said, do you mean precise abutters, or will people, including Dave, who would be abutting if he gave permission? And I was told to take his name off, so, but, but yes, he, he also would like to have the alley closed and would, would exit onto the long north-south alley, and is not concerned about coming east or west on it.
Okay. Typically, when alleys are vacated, in this case, a standard 14-foot alley, seven foot of that line goes to each property owner. You're aware of that?
Yes.
There's also a requirement, I'm told, to actually close off a vacated alley, to physically close it off somehow.
Yes.
So, that will be a requirement.
Yes.
And just as, I know this is question and not comment period, but I'll make the comment that I've always admired the Park Avenue Neighborhood Association, if that's the official name of it, for their solidarity and their cohesiveness and their hard work to keep that, keep that all together. It would seem to be appropriate to ask the association to encourage homeowners who live on alleys to try to cut back the overgrowth that, you know, may spill into the public right of way, because part of the, a lot of us went over there earlier today, and part of the visual that forces people to take, you know, a little path a little bit to the south is the fact that two, three feet of overgrowth comes from the north side. And if all the property owners were responsible enough to take care of the overgrowth that may be coming from their property, I think it would be better all the way around for everybody there.
Yes. I agree, and that's, am I allowed to answer?
Yeah. There's a different type of question, but we accept it. Go ahead.
No, I agree, and part of the plan is, in fact, to, you know, to keep that more trimmed and to, and to take care of those things. I think part of the, I don't know if this is an excuse or not, but then you have a sense that there will actually be beauty that follows, you have more of an investment, you know, in keeping that. And it's hard to keep the north-south alley, it's hard to, you know, make sure that trash is picked up and things like that, and I think it would be great if we spruce it all up, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. White, I have a question myself then. You share about the different neighbors. Did they have, maybe I missed it, did they submit letters to share their intent of support regarding this endeavor? Because you said that, you know, this neighbor said okay, and this, this neighbor said okay.
Yeah, I know.
Just for the fact that if this was passed this tonight, and then neighbors come back to us and say, I didn't say that, or that was misinterpreted, or whatever like that, how do we guard ourselves against that tonight?
I was not made aware that I should get any formal statement from anybody. I had never gone through this process before. All it was asked for was the petition, was the names of the abutters, and I got that, so I didn't think there were other statements that were...
It helps clarify for me personally, when I know that there's another person that lives nearby...
Yes.
...that also uses it, and so when you have different neighbor situations that happen like that, it helps to, oftentimes, they come in the form of support, okay?
Yes.
They come in the form of yay for, yay nay.
Yes.
And so, when it comes down to a couple of neighbors, basically going back and forth, where this seemed to have been this afternoon...
Yes.
It is just helpful for me to get some wider input regarding the neighborhood, that's where I am.
I agree absolutely, and of course, there's, you know, I have no documentation for that. The people to whom I spoke were largely people who were in the radius map, and so the letters went out asking for this and announcing this to me, and so they, they might have had they wanted to, you know.
I understand, I know how that goes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Are we good up here, ready to go public? Okay. We're going to hear from the public first, and then we can come back and have, you get to have a five-minute rebuttal for more questions that are happening.
Okay. I wanted it earlier, now I've got it.
Yeah, you got it tonight. All right. Appreciate it. Okay. We'd like to speak, those who would like to speak in favor of this resolution, this is an ordinance, it's a bill, whatever, who would like to speak in the favor, please come forth, show your name and address, and show your thoughts.
Hello. My name's David Faulkner. I live at 835 Park Avenue, the northern half of the alley there that you're talking about. I'm in favor of this, and as you were saying, there are, there is growth on the west, going towards the west side of the alley, because of the fact that there's incidences where trash cans get knocked over, people turn the corner too tightly, so I'm trying to widen it a little bit to keep my trash from spilling over all the time, picking it up. If you look toward the east side of that portion of the alley, you'll notice that it's all cut and trimmed, and you can see everything. So, as far as visual aspect of the house goes, you've got a great, a great view of the house, and it is a very nice old house that we're trying to take care of and restore. In keeping the overgrowth going on the bushes right, on the fence line right now, it's just a matter of safety, you know, with the fences, the trash cans, my retaining walls, so that's why it's like that, because I'm constant, in fact, in the front half on the east side, I'm always going out, picking up the rocks that people knocked over because they've turned the corner too tightly on the alley going in. They embed them down into the ground, I have to pull them out, reset everything, and it's just a constant hassle. I've had to replace bushes out front there because they've broken them off from turning the corners too tightly. Again, you know, when we moved into the house 14 years ago, it didn't look like it does now, and I have done a lot of work, spent a lot of money on that house, and the side porch that's, abuts right up to the alley, it's constantly getting dirty and dusty. Prior owners, I don't think, ever used it because it was all overgrown, the floor was sunken. We built it all back up. We've got, my family calls it my summer apartment. I live out there every day. So, having people come down that alley stirring up dust, you know, and some people zoom down there too. there, too. I've got children, although they're older now, when they were younger, we were always afraid for them, you know, telling them when they can take the trash out, be very careful, watch the people coming down the alley, they zoom down the alley. It's, you know, it's a safety measure as well, so Karen and I really want to do a good job in cleaning that up. You know, I would have loved to have had it done already, because my house is gonna be on the Garden on July 12th. So I need, we need to do something to get this taken care of, so that it can get cleaned up, and if we can block that off, the sooner we block that off, the sooner we can make that look beautiful back there, too.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to come and speak in favor of this bill? Please come forth. Scene nine, at this time, we'd like to invite those who'd like to speak in opposition of this bill, to please come forth, show your name, your address, and show your thoughts.
Marty Wolfson, 809 Park Avenue. I am the person referenced by Karen as the person who uses the alley a lot, I don't know if I use it every day, but it is the main way I go to try to get anywhere that's southeast, or southwest, or northwest, or north of my house. I live at the southern end of the Park Avenue Forest Alley, and the most convenient way for me would be to exit the alley in Manitoba. Unfortunately, because of the construction of my ancient garage, and the shed in the that my neighbor across the hall has constructed, I can't really back out of my garage and go south, I can only back out and go north. So I use the alley that's under discussion as a way to avoid going the entire length of the north-south alley from Manitoba to, or from my house, which is the third house from Manitoba, all the way up to Riverside, and then to come down, to go over Riverside over to Park, or to Forest, and then go down the entire length of those streets, because the way I would exit would be from the roundabout on Bartlett. If I go up to Riverside and turn right, I would intersect 933 there with, and that intersection is very difficult to negotiate if anyone has ever been there. So I've lived at 809 Park Avenue for 27 years, for a good, you know, most of that time, I've used that alley, and I can assure Karen and Mr. Faulkner that I've never hit Karen's house, or Mr. Faulkner's house, I've never come close to their house, I've certainly never sped through the alley, or kicked up dirt or dust in either of their houses. I think, you know, Karen would tell you that that's the case. So it's, it's the way I go regularly, and I would appreciate if it would stay open as a public right away.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else who'd like to come speak in opposition to this bill? Scene nine, we will now have up to five minutes of rebuttal from Ms. Karen today.
I think I'll leave five minutes, but, and may I ask you a question in this point? When Mr. Brody said that the alley had to be physically closed off, does it need to have that happen at both points? At both, along the long alley and along the street?
Mr. Brody, you would like to answer that real quick? I'm not sure, because I just found out that there was a requirement that the petitioners who asked to vacate the alley are required to block it off. I didn't know that there was a requirement, so I don't know if it needs to be both east and west or not. It would seem to be that would be the case.
Okay, thank you, thank you for answering. I think to rebut, Marty and I, we had a long discussion yesterday about this, it was friendly, we were both stating our own views of this. It remains my, you know, my own feeling about this, that it's, it's an inconvenience for him to drive farther to Riverside, to be able to go east or west there. It's, it's a little bit, there are more inconveniences for having through traffic between our two houses. The other thing, as I said, I shoveled somebody out of that alley that was not Marty, I told him I was not worried about him in particular, but odd things happen, and sometimes they happen overnight, and, and on the straightaway, people have run into trees and houses, and I would just like not to worry about somebody else coming through that alley. So a total, you know, non-neighborhood person came through the alley with a big car the other day, I can't control it because I'm not there all the time, and even if I were, I couldn't control it, so that would be helpful to me and stuff.
Okay, thank you. Back to the council now, before, we started that way, we'll start to my left, if you have any comments or concerns. Mr. Brody, Mr. Scott?
Yes, I do. The main thing here is, you got the two neighbors abut to the alley, both in agreement of what they would like to see done with this. On Forest Avenue, there were five east-west alleys, or north-south alleys, I'm sorry, on Forest Avenue, and all of them have been shut down. John, I don't know where the beginning and the end on the alley needs to be shut down, I know one person, Suzanne and Tom Bullock, they made a driveway, very nice brick driveway of the part near their house, and then shut down the rest, and it was the same concern, living there 23 years, you know, worried about that, people coming back and forth on there. Marty, I understand what you're saying, the thing about it is, what we're talking about, an inconvenience of really seconds from going from where that alley is all the way to Riverside, and I think when it comes down to it, safety and pedestrian should outweigh the automobile. We do that a lot in the Midwest, you know, we're all in cars, we're all driving, and we're all thinking, gosh, it's an inconvenience for me to go around here, and if you go all the way to Riverside, back around down the other one, you're talking minutes, you know, not even, probably two minutes, when it comes down to the timing, so with that, I'm in favor of Karen and Dave on this proposal.
Well, just the clarification on the requirement, to the extent I recall it, what you need to do. Part of the reason, I believe this was done, it was probably eight or 10 years ago, is that you will actually receive a deed to that seven feet of property, as will, and the city wants people to know that that is no longer an alley. I'm not sure it's dictated exactly how you have to accomplish that, but the other resident will receive it. So it's no longer a city alley, and they, they want to be clear to everybody that this is not, you know, yeah, that it's private property now, and one of the ways to do that was to make sure that it was blocked and no longer accessible.
Yes.
You asked a question about whether both sides, I don't have the answer to that, we have to reconsider. I think it just has to be secure, so it's no longer accessible.
Yes.
Beyond that, I'm not 100% certain, but the ordinance should tell us a little bit more.
Okay, great, thank you.
I'm sorry. You're hard to hear, Dave, I'm sorry. Did you hear what it meant?
I heard what you said, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Dave, tough woman, Brody.
So in terms of inconvenience, obviously, if we're shutting off one of the possible routes in and out of this neighborhood, you know, to the properties that are on this alleyway, doesn't that also then put an additional burden on, of activity, if you would, on the people on the other ends? You know, particularly on the north, to the north, emptying out onto Riverside, certainly there are houses adjacent to that as well, and then down at, on the south end. So I guess I'm sympathetic to your worry and your preference, but I'm also, you know, also really want to keep this as convenient as possible, you know, for the length of the neighborhood. So in committee, I've asked the question about how many other garages are actively used along that whole stretch of road, and keeping in mind that that's the current situation, but that might change over time, so-
Yes.
-the number of structures that go out, so that's, you know, a bit of my concern is, you know, the burden, if you would, on other people at either end of this alleyway if we close this off. And I guess there's a little bit of a broader issue, too, in that this is the second alley vacation that we've considered, and within, I think, a month, maybe a month and a half, and I guess, who wouldn't want their alley vacated if there are abutting properties and they're not using it? You know what I'm saying? For traffic, egress and ingress.
Yes.
So I guess I'm wondering broader about policy, and, you know, just, you know, additional petitioners coming forward.
Yes.
And so I guess the standards, to me, should not be that the two adjacent property owners are in agreement on this, but it should be, should it work for the larger block? So that's, that's what I'll be considering for my vote.
Thank you. And Ms., oh, your part's already finished, you can have a seat right now at this time, if you can.
Oh, I was gonna try to answer a question.
It's okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. You got it, Ms. June Williams-Preston, thank you.
I kind of made my comment during the question portion, I thought it was comment question, so, you know, I still have the concern about, I know, and even that the next alley up, I think it might have been a few houses up, if this is closed, that would give, I think, people thought of maybe using that instead, which I think the petitioner and the person who spoke against in committee, I think they both even indicated that that was an even more narrow pass, but it's open in a way, as I looked at it, that, you know, someone might actually be driving over people's lawns. So again, it's kind of what Mrs. Broden, you know, by closing this, what other problems might we actually create that we have not necessarily considered, and maybe don't, you know, we can imagine many different things. So I think that that's part of my concern, you know, and that's what I'll be using to consider in my vote tonight.
Okay, thank you. President Scott?
Yes, I forgot one other comment. Chatham Park Neighborhood Association has a listserv, where about 200 members within the area share emails, you can do a gang email out on the listserv. Everything is debated and discussed on that listserv. I was absolutely surprised that no one that got the notice put anything out on the listserv for this, so I don't think it's really an issue with anybody else, and we didn't really hear, only have one other person speaking against, but the listserv, many you know, can go on in nauseam on, like, the sale of a wooden table. So everything is discussed, which is really good, I mean, I'm glad that community forum is there, so nothing was brought up on that.
Well, just really quickly, and I'm not sure, I mean, the person who spoke against, though, did mention, and I thought this was interesting, too, just something to think about, in terms of who was notified about it, and so, I don't know, apparently, he didn't live close enough to get notification, so I don't know, you know, if the fact that it wasn't on there was necessarily because nobody had a problem with it.
300 people, 300 feet from that property got notice, and I know, I know people in that area that are on the listserv, so.
Okay, it just doesn't mean that everybody's notified or knows that uses that, but that's okay, it's your district.
I'm cool.
You gotta vote, I gotta vote, we all got votes.
I'd like to share my thought, basically, when it comes down to alley vacations, I have, over the years, I can't really recall when I voted for one that had opposition. Normally, I have voted for something when somebody says that, is anybody using it, if they're the only ones that night, they were the only ones, and so they shut it down, this meant them, and it wasn't really being used, it was whatever, but I've been trying to think since this has come up, being a part of something where you have somebody who's, yes, they don't live within 300 feet, but they live very close, and they utilize that as a regular street in their mindset as they go to and from work. I have not had that experience where both people, one's saying yes, one's saying no, and they actually live there. If I had had that experience, I would have personally gone back, I see that more as a mediation thing, and like you said, you try to come to some kind of understanding, and I have great concerns when we shut down something when there's, when there's activity on something that's there. If there's no activity on it, I would worry about it, but tonight, the fact that we had a long discussions afternoon, we had one here, that's my concern. That's why, so, floor is open for motions.
Make motion, send 3517 to the full council favor.
Do we have a second? Seeing that we don't have a second, it seems to die from like a second, then do we have another motion? Need a motion now, so-
Is it with a non-favorable?
Do we have a second on the, for Ms. Preston, well, Ms. Preston?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Then, let's take a vote and see, we can see if we have a regular vote, and then, you want to just, all the favor say aye?
Aye.
All are closed. Did I hear a nay?
Two nays. Nay.
This was defeated.
It was defeated.
Are we clear?
Defeated.
We're not clear. I see confusion. What I suggest, let's state the motion again, and then let's state the second again, and then I'm gonna ask Ms. Fowler to take the rope.
Can I move?
Yes, please.
To send to the full council with an unfavorable recommendation?
Okay.
Second.
We have a second, and then Ms. Fowler, can you take the rope?
Councilmember Varner.
Nay.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Brody.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Preston.
Aye.
Councilmember Broden.
Aye.
President Scott.
Aye.
Had six ayes, one nay.
We're gonna have everybody here, I'm putting back, probably have six. Okay, cool, I'm not, we have seven people here tonight, right?
Yes, that's correct.
All righty, well, we thank you for that, and we'll send it to the full council. I think we have a couple more to go.
Yep, 3617.
3617. Ms. Fowler.
3617, public hearing on ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, for budget transfers on various departments within the city of South Bend, Indiana, for the year of 2017.
Okay, we had a committee, a budget hearing this afternoon, so we're back there.
First round, finance committee, had a committee meeting and second reading on Bill 36-17, we send this bill to the council, favorable or not.
Thank you. Representative, please.
John Murphy from the Department of Finance, 3617 are quarterly budget transfers, as you know, they're transferred between accounts or departments in the same fund, they don't, they're not additional appropriations. There was a question at the committee meeting about the transfer in Fund 279, that's a transfer from salaries that were unspent to cover professional services contracts in focus, and the purpose of the contract is to work in areas of the PSAP, the assessor, assessments, and the website, so that was a question issued earlier in the year, nasty activities in that, for that sort of, do you have any answer, any questions that you have?
Do you have any other questions for Mr. Murphy at this time, council?
You said it was PSAP, assessments, can you just repeat the last couple?
The city website.
Website.
Mr. Varner?
Yeah, so this is, yeah, the U.S. Department disposes of the expenditures for the year for this, for those three items.
I'm not sure about that. I'm not sure about that.
I guess what we, I guess the other question would be then that you anticipate that there would be, there would be more requests. I'm trying to get a handle on what the total's going to be as we look at these, over the course of the year.
I'm not anticipating any additional request for this.
And this is supplement in addition to this 100,000, in addition to what we appropriated earlier?
Yeah, it's not, it's just a transfer between accounts. It's not an additional at all.
But I guess I'm trying to get at, what do we expect to spend this year on those three items with, and focus.
I think we'll be able to cover within the existing budget.
And that total would be, do you recall what we appropriate? I don't, that's my question originally.
It's more, it's more a line item. It's a couple hundred thousand in professional services, not just for this particular vendor, but for all type of things.
If you had a chat, could you, it doesn't have to be tonight. Could you get us the focus total?
We could, yeah, we can do that, too.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, no other questions on this particular bill at this time? So, then we will go to the public. Those who'd like to speak in favor, please come forth, share your name and give your thoughts. Okay, seeing no one coming forward, those who'd like to speak in opposition, please do likewise. Public hearing is closed. Back to the full council for your thoughts or your recommendations, whichever way.
Make motion, send 3617 to the full council, favor.
Second. All the favor say aye.
Aye.
All are closed at the same time. It is carried. Now, we have Ms. Fowler to read Bill Number 3717.
3717. An ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and city service operations in 2017 of $40,000 from Parks Fund 201, $200,000 from the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund 202, $100,000 from the DCI Operating Fund 211, $3,000 from Gift Donation Request Fund 217, $125,000 from Local Roads and Street Funds 251, $28,000 from the Indiana River Rescue Fund 291, $285,000 from the Parks Capital Fund 405, $295,000 from Morris Performing Arts Center Capital Fund 416, and $1,000 from the Erskine Village Bond Fund 758.
Okay, thank you. We had a report again from Ms. White.
Personnel and Finance Committee held a committee meeting, public hearing on this bill, and we send this bill to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Now, we have here again for Mr. John Murphy. Say your name and address and all the good stuff, and proceed.
John Murphy from the Department of Administration of Finance's offices on the 12th floor of this building.
Thank you.
These are the June quarterly appropriations for the Civil City Funds. We went through these in committee, I won't repeat everything, but just briefly, the $40,000 is for water utility costs, the Mayflower, $200,000 for Mayflower Road paving, the housing market studies, it would be up to $100,000. The actual cost may be less than that. Some conceptual design for the roundabouts, $3,000 out of the donation funds, some public works improvements of $125,000 out of local roads and street funds. Indiana River Rescue, $28,000 for some repairs. They've had a number of active, number of events the last couple of years. Parks Capital, $285,000, the big item, one of the big items on the list, Veterans Memorial Park improvements, which is funded by a donation from Indiana University of South Bend. And then, $295,000 for public access elevator and marquee improvements at the Morris Performing Arts Center. Not happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Any questions for Mr. Murphy? Any thoughts, questions at this time?
I thought it was a good question from a citizen, the bears repeating tonight. You mentioned that the allocation for DCI, the $100,000, you don't anticipate that it'll be that much, but if we were to pass that, what happens to the rest of that money?
Right, we would not, as with any appropriation, if it's unspent, the money remains, by the end of the year, it's either unspent or unencumbered, the appropriation lapses, and the money just remains in the account, in the cash for the city. So, that's, that's how it works. That's how the city's been able to develop fund balances over the years and have a good credit rating and so forth. So, we don't always spend all of our appropriations. We kind of, we plan for what we, you know, reasonably think it will be, but sometimes it turns out to be less than what we think.
Any other questions? Are you good, or do you have another thought?
I do have other thoughts, but I'll allow other council members to.
Hey, Ms. Broden.
So, the appropriation for the Morris Capital, do we have, that's a quarter of a million dollars. Is that, do we have a, oh, I'm missing the word, I'm sorry, basically a list of, you know, items, priority projects in terms of, you know, immediacy, what needs to happen, and, you know, how does this fit into a broader picture, I guess, is what I'm trying to get at in terms of priorities?
I can speak to the, we do a capital, we do a five-year capital budget with, with the budget. So, all the funds do a five-year capital. Aaron could probably speak more fluently about this particular appropriation, but the city in general, this five-year capital budget.
Ms. Broden, do you want to hear from Mr. Perry on this?
Yeah, that would be great, just to get a sense of, you know, some of the other big-ticket items, if you would, that we could anticipate, or if this is getting bumped up because of concerns.
Name and address, and then proceed, please.
Aaron Perry, Executive Director, Venice Parks and Arts, 321 East Walter Street. These two particular items weren't, did not show up in the five-year capital plans, and that's why they're coming here to you tonight. There were things that, the elevator, for example, we didn't anticipate that was going to need to be replaced. We thought last year about this time when we were budgeting, we had enough money to repair a couple of the, the small mechanical items in there. Turned out the whole elevator needed to be overhauled, so we didn't anticipate that. Same thing with the marquee. We didn't anticipate that the video bores, they're 12-inch by 12-inch video bores that are in the display. So, if you go look at today, you'll notice that a couple of them are lighter than other ones. We'd anticipate that they would no longer be manufactured. So, these things got bumped up on the priority list. The particular fund that we're requesting use from is generated by a dollar per ticket surcharge, and so, this is money that's been sitting in the Morris account for these purposes in general. But you'll see in our budget process, the anticipated five-year capital plans for all of our projects.
Ms. Broden?
Okay, thank you.
Is that satisfied?
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Varner, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
You put in the status?
Nope.
Okay, Ms. Vorty and Ms. White?
I don't have any questions, just have a statement, once we get to that point.
Okay, we'll take statements afterwards. And now, we go to the public. Those who'd like to speak in favor of this, this is Bill 3717. Please come forth. Just state your name and address and share your thoughts in favor.
Peace and love, my name is Gar Goo Lisa D. Berry. My address, 505, Kenmore, South Bend, Indiana, 46619, United States of America.
Thank you.
On the bill, I'd like to speak on part of the 500, I mean, 100 houses, 500 families, about the market study, a few members of the Financial Committee, also known as the Money Magnets, which is, I'm also a member of, Impact members, and a few of the members inside the community would like to see the bill being postponed until we have further information on who, when, and how the market study will be performed.
So, you're not really in favor of it? You're more?
I'm in favor, but I'm in favor because I know that this would be a wonderful project for the community, but I would just like to see a few things postponed, not me, but a few other people.
You're in favor, but you would like to see it delayed?
Yes, I'm in favor. I'm not opposed of this because it's too much of an opportunity for the community, but I would like to see a few things, you know, postponed, especially the market study because we don't have enough concrete information on it.
Okay.
I came to the meeting earlier, and it was still, they didn't know who, they didn't have a firm decision on who would be conducting the study.
Okay.
And also, a few members from the committees would like to see it postponed, and especially some of the Impact Team and the residents inside the community who are putting hard time into conducting this, would like to know where some of the financial compensation will be coming from.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. We'll, we'll be answering those questions right now. We're just looking to get some comments, and then we'll come back to hearing some statements afterwards.
I might have to come back up here, too.
All right, we have these. All right, anybody else who'd like to speak in, we are in favor.
Marty Wolfson, 809 Park Avenue. I'd just like to reemphasize some of the comments that were made this afternoon about getting clarification and working with the city department to understand, not only how much is this going to cost and who is going to do it, but what would be the parameters of the study? What is it going to be that is going to be investigated? And I think it's very crucial to work closely, not only with the second district representative, which is, would be central, and not only with all the members of the committee who are interested in this, but also the people who are involved. And it's very exciting, I think, a community project to create 100 homes or 500 families. So, we had a study that was done in 2013 downtown, and apparently, it only investigated the interest in apartments and homes for people who made over $50,000, leaving out a good many of people, not only in the city of South Bend, but also in downtown as well. So, and it was, they mentioned this afternoon that this was done not because the consultant decided to do that, but had the direction of the city. So, I think it's crucial that those issues of how this is going to be conducted and whose, whose interests are going to be considered are clarified in consultation with the people who are actually involved in the project.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak in favor, whether different type of commentary, whatever you would like to share in favor? Cool.
Hi, Janice, 724 West Washington. I've been working on the 100 Houses, 500 Families Initiative, and I don't have any big issues about the market study, but we do have a lot of citizen involvement, and we've got about 40 volunteers working on this. So, it's not your usual thing where the city kind of does it and everybody says, okay. So, if we can postpone it, it'll give us a little time to work through all of our committees. And we'd also like to come and talk to the council members that are interested, so we can share our map and the impact districts in our process. But we're very grateful for the city's support.
I appreciate it.
Either way is okay with me, but we do have a lot of volunteers.
I understand. Thank you so kindly. Again, anybody else who'd like to come speak in favor? Seeing none, those who'd like to speak in opposition? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? Opposition is closed. So, now then, I started on my left last time, we'll go back to my right, starting with Ms. Preston, comments, and we will run on down to Ms. White.
I think most specifically, I know that this bill is really about a lot of different allocations, and given that this particular one out of Department of Community Investment has, is particularly related to a project that was really originated within the community, I think it's very important that every step of the way that we are working with the community in making decisions. We have asked to get a copy of whatever scope was drawn up to, when they went to talk to consultants, we have not seen that yet. So, I think that it is important. I appreciate the community coming out to speak, and I will be making a motion to actually pull from this bill that particular allocation, and look forward to possibly considering that in the next two weeks to month, whenever we can have it on another reading, to give us some time to work with the city, to talk more, to understand more about the project itself and where the community wants to go with this project.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Vorty?
So, this is, so if there's, this is one item, I think Councilmember Preston has identified, how would that impact, John, the rest, the balance of the request in terms, you know, if we were to single that out? Is that a two-week process, or is it a four-week?
I think there are different options, but I think what Councilmember Preston was talking about is the remaining part of the bill would be passed tonight, and that this part would be considered in two weeks.
So, it can be considered in two weeks? We don't have to wait four?
I'm not sure about, well, I guess I'm not sure about that. But I think the balance of the bill could be passed tonight.
Okay, I would like some clarification on that because I don't want to hold up, you know, any of these other needed items.
You'd have to amend it on the floor.
You have to amend it.
You'd have to amend it on the floor, take that part out.
Right. But I guess I would like some clarification of what the, you know, what that process would be going forward. Are we looking at something two weeks later, or do we have to restart this individual item within?
Just go on the next agenda.
Resolution.
Counsel attorney for that.
It would just go on the next council meeting.
It's already in the, this proposed ordinance, you can go ahead two weeks to it. That one item you're taking out.
And then, they'll come back in two weeks.
They'd just come back with that one. Just go on the next one.
Any other questions?
It would.
For that one item.
It would, it would be by itself.
It would have to be advertised and have a first reading in your five, four weeks.
They'll still come back for first reading in two weeks then.
Yeah, we'll come back in two weeks for first reading.
And a four-week wait, how would that impact the balance of these other items?
The other ones keep going.
We can adopt that.
Okay.
Just line out and remove.
All right.
Dr. Varner?
No, if there's this many questions, I think it's appropriate for the city to take the time and get the additional information out there. I would note that maybe someone who thought this, our email had a list from about a year ago of the proposed districts that came, I forget where it came from. But I think you probably would want to know specifically what those districts are, and that's, I think that's quite a legitimate question, and planning can still go on, like waiting for that, so I don't think it stops anything in this business entirely.
Okay. All right, President Scott?
Yeah, allocations are just that, they're, this would be the line item allocation. It doesn't mean the work would immediately start tomorrow. If you guys want to pull it up, fine. I don't think you have to. I think you can earmark it just like Aaron Perry's marquee. Doesn't mean he's spending that money tomorrow and it's already set. So, I think there is still time, even if we pass it, that details and everything can be put together on that. And the way I understood it was, while 100 houses in 500 days is part of this in parallel, that this was a study of this entire city to understand what our housing market is. That was the conversation that we had, which helps us understand where we need to go in that direction. So, I don't see a problem with having the allocation, and it does not mean that it needs to be spent right now, and I think the administration has a clear-cut indication that there is concern in laying out the details to that allocation. So, allocations are just that, it's moving the money to the proper location, so when it's time and it's needed to be spent, it can be spent.
So, Mr. Vorty?
I would be supportive of Councilmember Preston's motion.
Okay. And Ms. White?
Anytime that we have the opportunity to clarify, to engage, and to really receive additional information, even though this is just appropriation, based on the number of questions. number of questions, uh, uh, citizens requesting to be part of the discussion, making sure that once we get to the point in which a consultant or professional firm has been selected, that we can at least give those individuals some parameters that is part of a community, um, discussion. And again, um, I have no difficulties of pulling this out, and so that I would encourage all council members and to make sure that your concerns, because it's just not only for the second district, it has a more, um, city-wide type of impact. And I think it's just our job or our, um, expectation as council members to ensure that we do ask those tough, those questions, that we do, uh, make sure that we are responding appropriately, and that we have the information that we can make the best decision. So, I do support pulling out, uh, the $100,000. And I think that we have, uh, obligation to make sure that we sit down with the administration, that we have all the questions, as many as possible, and those parameters. And so when it comes time to take action, we will have a different level of discussion.
I think pulling this out, uh, helps us to have a laser focus on what we are talking about. And, um, it gives us, um, not only the focus and the interest, but it also increases the seriousness of the role of the council when it comes down to working with the administration with the budget. We do have a very key role in that, and that does not step in on anybody's feet. It is a part of us, um, helping each other tie our shoes correctly and moving forward, not stepping on feet. Um, so, Ms., um, uh, Virginia Williams-Preston, you have a question for a motion?
Uh, I move to strike the line item for the, um, allocation of $100,000 for the market study.
Second. All in favor? Are we all clear? Everybody clear? All minds clear, good. All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. All right, it is struck, stricken, struck, whatever. I know, my dad's English professor, I can hear him fussing in there now, Lord have mercy. It is moving, let's go there. You understand where we are. I see ayes.
Are you moving to send it favorably?
Now I'm, now I'm moving to the next one.
As amended.
Okay?
As amended.
Yeah. So...
I'd make the motion to go favorably as amended.
Okay. Second. All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. It is carried. We at peace? Good? Good. Now let's move on to, um, Bill 3817.
3817. Third reading on, in ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and enterprise operations in 2017 of $891,089 from the EMS Capital Fund 287.
Thank you so kindly for reading that, Ms. White. And now we will have a report, again, from Ms. White, to give us, um, what was the recommendation of her committee today?
The Personnel and Finance Committee held a committee meeting and public hearing on Bill 38-17. We sent this bill to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. White. Now we will have our presenter, again, for the last part. Mr. John Murphy, please state your name and address.
Uh, John Murphy from the Department of Administration and Finance, this is the Enterprise Fund Appropriations of June. They're both related to the EMS Capital Fund. The second one involves a program from the state of Indiana whereby the city pays the state $171,089, and in return, they send us back $1,411,932. It's kind of Medicaid, kind of a...
I understand.
It, it sounds too good to be true, but it, for us last year, we have the writing from the state, and so that's a, that's a good deal for us. I've heard of this back in, um, I used to work for a medical care facility, and we did this back in the 90s, but I didn't realize that it was still permitted. And so, that, that's a great deal for us to provide revenue. And one of the items that we'll, it will be used for is the construction of and design of Fire Station Number Nine. $200,000 is being requested for appropriation for EPOC architects, $100,000 for additional land purchases for Station Nine, and $120,000 for demolition costs to demolish five properties that were already acquired earlier in the year. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
This question or a comment from you, could, uh, we have a, a brief synopsis of that project. The chief shared some nice comments today. Um, Mr. Chief, you're here. Thank you for being here at this time. And so, just for the record, the public record, people can see exactly what you shared with us this afternoon. I thought it was appropriate to be shared tonight.
Absolutely. Steven Cox, Fire Chief with the South Bend Fire Department with an office at 1222 South Michigan Street in South Bend. Um, I, I would like to start with, uh, just real quick, reiterating what, uh, Mr. Murphy said about the Medicaid money, that's reimbursement. Um, basically, the state is basically taking their cut, an administrative cut of the amount of money that we're receiving as an adjustment from Medicaid, from federal funding from reimbursement year 2014. So that's basically what that was. We did apply for that last year for the 2013, well, we, we applied in 2014 for the 2013 monies, and they had a similar program, and we did receive a relatively large chunk in change, although we haven't paid the state upfront, which seemed extremely unusual. Um, as far as the Fire Station Nine project goes, as Councilmember Davis mentioned, uh, I was asked about a timeline. Uh, we have acquired five properties. We will be taking possession of one last property in September. One of the additional appropriations we've asked for here is to allow us to be able to demolish the properties, uh, that we've acquired, taking possession of them after one, one last renter, uh, that was living in one of those houses, uh, has, has finished out his, uh, his lease. Um, so Dave Remo's from DCI, uh, worked with the actual landowner to allow that individual to go ahead and, and work out his lease, and we're certainly not trying to kick anybody out of their home, uh, unusual, quick manner, or anything along those lines. Uh, additionally, we do have, uh, some money in appropriations here to begin the design work for Fire Station Number Nine, uh, so that hopefully, once the appropriation is made, we will get an architect under contract and begin that design phase, which we anticipate will take about six months, uh, in order for us to be able to put it out to bid for construction sometime in winter and start construction next spring. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Creativity is one quick thing on that, please?
Yes. Uh, what we're, what our aim is, is to be able to design a station that actually fits in the neighborhood over, uh, on Mishawaka Avenue there, uh, not necessarily just cookie-cuttering a fire station into a, you know, sticking into the space that, that, that either the, the look of the station doesn't fit, and the size of the station doesn't fit. We want to make that be a part of the neighborhood over there for an extended period of time, as we've mentioned in numerous public meetings.
Okay. Any questions from the, for the chief or for, uh, Mr. John Murphy at this time? Anyone on my right? Anyone on my left?
Have you, have you begun to consider what will become of old Station Nine?
Um, yes. Uh, well, actually, what, what we had anticipated was allowing the folks, probably with DCI, to, uh, perhaps sell that. It is a historic landmark building, and so, uh, there, there are limitations on what a new property owner would be able to do with the building itself, especially on the exterior. Um, and that was obviously one of our issues with that building. Um, however, we also recognize that that, that has been a landmark building in River Park for, since 1926, and so we're hoping that somebody over there, we're, we're pretty certain that there will be a market for that building to be able to be used, uh, once we vacate it. So, uh, the, the hope, and in some discussions with the folks from the River Park Business Association, is they, they have the same feeling as well that there, there would be some interest.
Thank you. Any other questions on my right or my left? Seeing none, we will now open it up for public discussion. Those who would like to speak in favor of this bill, please come forth, share your thoughts. Anyone who would like to speak in opposition, do likewise, please. The public hearing is now closed. We come back to the council for comments or recommendations. Do whatever one you want to do.
Make a motion to send 3817 to full council favorably.
Second.
All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. It is carried. I'd like to make a motion to close the, um, committee of the whole.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Opposed? It is now closed. Thank you. Say aye.
Full council is now back in session. Um, Ms. Fowler, would you please give reading, third reading to Bill 2717? And I will remind council members that even there are two members missing, we still need a total of five for passage.
2717. Third reading on an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 3015 Western Avenue, Councilman District Number Two, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Motion to approve.
Second.
As amended in the committee, Bill 2717, second.
Ms. Fowler?
Councilmember Fordy.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Preston.
Aye.
Councilmember Broden.
Aye.
Councilmember Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
President Scott.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
3517, please.
Third reading on an ordinance to contend, to, to vacate the following described property, East West Alley from Park Avenue to First North South Alley between Mantoo and Riverside.
Motion to defeat.
Second.
Ms. Fowler?
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Preston.
I'm sorry.
I did a motion to defeat.
The request to...
Motion to defeat.
Right. Aye.
Councilmember Broden.
Aye.
Councilmember Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Fordy.
Aye.
President Scott.
Nay.
Six ayes, one nay.
Thank you. 3617, please.
3617. Third reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, for budget transfers for various departments within the city of South Bend, Indiana, for the year of 2017.
Moses Popatchis.
Second.
Ms. Fowler?
Councilmember Preston.
Aye.
Councilmember Broden.
Aye.
Councilmember Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Fordy.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
President Scott.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. 3717, please.
3717. Third reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and city service operations in 2017, of $40,000 from Parks Fund 201, $200,000 from Motor Vehicle Highway Fund 202, $100,000 from DCI Operating Fund 211, $3,000 from Gift, Donation, and Bequest Fund 217, $125,000 from the Local Roads and Street Fund 251, $28,000 from the Indiana River Rescue Fund 291, $285,000 from the Parks Capital Fund 20, I mean, 405, $295,000 from the Morris Performing Arts Center Capital Fund 416, and $1,000 from the Erskine Village Bond Fund 758.
There's a change of motion to amend this committee in the whole.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Councilmember Broden.
Hold on.
Motion to approve as amended in the committee of the whole.
Second.
Ms. Fowler?
Councilmember Broden.
Aye.
Councilmember Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Fordy.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Preston.
Aye.
President Scott.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
3817, please.
3817. Third reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and enterprise operations in 2017, of $891,089 from EMS Capital Fund 287.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Fowler?
Councilmember Varner.
Aye.
Council, Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Fordy.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Preston.
Aye.
Councilmember Broden.
Aye.
Vice President, I mean, President Scott.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. Resolution 1734, please.
1734. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, accepting, confirming a resolution of the South Bend Redevelopment Commission, determining that the assessed value of property in the Douglas Road Economic Development Area for tax year payable 2018 may be allocated to the respective taxing units and other related matters.
Was there a committee report?
Ma'am, it's Virginia.
Oh, yes, that was me. Um, the Community Investment Committee met this afternoon and sends us forward with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Presenter?
My name is Beth Lynn Rames. I'm with the city's, um, Department of Community Investment with offices on the 14th floor of this building. Um, the resolution before you today will release the increment from the Douglas Road TIP for 201, for payable 2018. Um, and the reason we're doing that is because we, um, do not anticipate the need for it next year. Uh, we have some debt that's expected to be paid off in August, and at that point in time, we'll look at, uh, what our final plans for, for any money that might be left, and then, uh, closing this TIP probably early 2018.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none?
One question.
Ah, so one question.
Yeah, just one question. Once it's paid off, how are we notified as a council that it's paid off?
Well, we can send you an email.
I would appreciate that.
We're paying, we pay, we're paying, uh, Major Mooks Fund. It's not an actual bond. It's a...
I understand.
Your vote is going all the way.
But if you could just, you know, just notify us. That's all. That's all. I'd appreciate it. I'd like to be informed. Thank you.
Like a title we can burn or something?
Actually, just, just for the record, I don't think you can eventually even close a TIP district without standing, and, uh, so it has to be cleared completely before.
Yeah.
So this will be just part of the process and anticipation.
Thank you.
Anything else from council? Seeing none. We'll open up the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of 1734, please come to the podium. Seeing, uh, anyone wishing to speak against 1734, please come to the podium. Getting seen, uh, turn it back to council.
Move for the adoption of 1734, second.
Ms. Fowler?
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Fordy.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Preston.
Aye.
Councilmember Broden.
Aye.
Councilmember Varner.
Aye.
President Scott.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. 1736, please.
1736. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating and authorizing certain actions and proceedings with respect to certain proposed economic development, revenue bonds, and related matters.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, the Personnel and Finance Committee held a committee meeting and public hearing on this resolution, and we sent it to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Presenter, name and address, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, members of the council. I'm Tyler Kloschnick, the law firm Vice Miller, Indianapolis, Indiana, One American Square. Uh, we're acting as bond counsel, if you'd like me to do a introduction here.
Sure.
Resolution, okay. Yeah, we're, we're acting as bond counsel with respect to this project. Uh, we came before the Econ Development Commission, uh, June 5th, at which time the Econ Development Commission passed a similar resolution to what's before you this evening. Uh, as discussed, we're a committee earlier today, where developer, uh, project owner made presentations with specificity as to the project, uh, the resolution before you, uh, contemplates, uh, not to exceed $14 million of bonds to be used for rehabilitation of the Miami Hills Apartments, 151 apartment units located on, uh, 3534 High Street. Uh, the resolution is a procedural step in order to, when we come back, hopefully for final approval of the issuance of the bonds, as well as documents that, uh, evidence the transaction. Uh, this resolution, if adopted, would permit the borrower to, under the federal tax code, reimburse itself with bond proceeds 60 days prior to today's date, or expenditures that have already occurred. Uh, there's, in this instance, a conduit financing, so there's no effect on the constitutional, uh, debt limit of the city, or it's not payable from taxes, so it's a revenue of the project. Um, the planning commission letter was sent as contemplated under statute, and, uh, no comments came... comments came back from the planning commission in terms of the zoning appropriateness of the master plan. This is a hundred percent, section eight, um, affordable property will remain that way after rehabilitation. Uh, the bonds are anticipated as a short-term collateralized structure, so they'll be only outstanding for eighteen to twenty-four months, and totally secured by U.S. treasuries and cash.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead.
Uh, uh, there's sixty-six, uh, planned new construction jobs to go along with the rehabilitation period.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to cut you off short. Um, any from council, they have any questions at this time?
So the key thing that our vote tonight is more of a support letter to indicating to those who are making the final decision that the city is in support of these efforts?
Uh, yeah, the, the key thing tonight would be with adoption, the ability to go back and reimburse with bond proceeds later, uh, in the process, if, when we come back for final approval of the actual bond condition. So tonight doesn't obligate, there's, there's not an approval condition or span or anything like that. It's simply a step to show, uh, under the federal tax code, that there was an official intent, uh, that there, there could be bonds that, and expenditures that would be reimbursed from those bonds.
When will that, when will that process take place, do you know?
Uh, closing, the developer, I could close on the transaction, put it into the year or so, uh, timeline probably around November will be, we'll be back for final approval.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Could you address, please, and I knew you did earlier, but just, um, just once again, address the issue of, um, during the renovation, what, um, where the current residents will go and how you're going to manage that?
Sure. Yeah, earlier tonight in, in committee, a question was asked, uh, during renovation, rehabilitation, where would tenants be located, uh, the primary preferences to have them make, stay at the, at the campus of the current facility and available units, um, while that work is taking place? And just with the natural rent roll and roll off of, of tenants, there, there's vacancies created, uh, they believe that they'll be able to utilize during that rehabilitation period.
Question with that. Um, since you had one hundred percent occupancy, and that was the answer today, I thought about that, I didn't want to hold it up, but, but since you had one hundred percent, wouldn't that take some time to, um, have enough spots available where people would actually be able to stay for two weeks?
Yeah.
Since you, I mean, if you were at eighty percent, it makes sense, you already have twenty percent ready to row, but at a hundred percent, um, given the population, are, are you concerned with not having enough to, um, be available for the tenants? And then if that is the case, for a large part of the section, in order to be able to expedite your time and not be, you know, held back, given all the other kind of variables out there, then what's your plan?
Uh, well, I, I can't speak to the developer because we don't represent them, but, um, uh, we're back.
You're a finance guy, okay, sorry.
We're bond counsel to the city.
I'm sorry.
Um, that's okay. I, I, I mean, I know that's their preference, and just given the natural course of, of tenancy law, I think that they'll have vacancies, but, uh, certainly alternative arrangements could be made for, for a short stay elsewhere, for two week period.
Okay. Then, I mean, given, it's not as easy for certain members to be able to find housing, that's one of the things I'm just saying, so, okay.
Anything else? Nope, thank you. We'll open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come to the podium. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against, please come to the podium. Seeing none, turn it back to council.
Move for passage of, uh, Resolution seventeen thirty-six?
Second. Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember Vorty.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Preston.
Aye.
Councilmember Broden.
Aye.
Councilmember Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
President Scott.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. Move on first readings. Ms. Fowler, would you please give first reading to thirty-nine seventeen?
Thirty-nine seventeen. First reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending sub-Parks D F three of chapter four, article four, section four dash forty-five of the South Bend Municipal Code addressing mobile food vendors and mobile food vending vehicles.
Entertaining a motion to send to DCI for seven-ten, for second and third reading in public hearing.
Second. I mean, so...
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Forty-seventeen, please.
Forty-seventeen. First reading on an ordinance initiated by the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter twenty-one of the South Bend Municipal Code, Article Three, by adding mini self-storage warehouse internal access to permit, permitted uses in the CB Community Business District, CBD Central District, Central Business District, and the GB General Business District, and establishing additional development standards for mini self-storage warehouse internal access, and adding a definition for mini self-storage warehouse internal access.
Entertaining a motion to refer to area plan for seven eighteen and Z and A, and for public hearing in the second and third reading for seven twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Unfinished business. Um, I don't think we need to read the...
No, we don't have to read them.
Entertaining a motion to send to BZA for seven-five and Z and A for second and third reading in public hearing on seven-ten.
Is that for all of them?
Nope, just seventeen thirty-seven. I'm sorry.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? For thirty-three seventeen, I entertain, I will entertain a motion to refer to area plan for seven eighteen and Z and A, uh, for public hearing in the second and third reading for seven twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Thirty-four seventeen, I'll entertain a motion to refer to area plan for seven eighteen and Z and A for public hearing, second and third reading for seven twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Councilmember Scott, would you go over the dates for seven-two thirty-seven, please again?
Seventeen thirty-seven is BZA for seven-five and Z and A for seven-ten.
Yes.
Under unfinished business, I would just like to point out that, uh, Scout Troop one seventy-three was here and lost interest. America, its finest. Any other unfinished business at this point?
Uh, one quick one. I think it's appropriate that we collectively wish a happy birthday to the Chief Deputy Clerk.
Happy birthday. Good to see you solo. Okay, any new business? That was new business, yeah. Kind of old business. Real good.
We won't go there.
Any new business? None? Okay. Mr. Varner, will you keep time for privilege on the floor? We'll turn to privilege, privilege on the floor. This is where citizens can address the council. You have three minutes, and, uh, you can speak on anything except what was on the agenda tonight. Please state your name and address and go.
I'm Alexander Brown, here at two-two-two East of Rush, being citizen South Bend. I have the Rush Dog Boot for City of Miami for Better Government. And a couple of nights, uh, I'm really just kind of depressed because, uh, I've been fighting a brick house in the second district at two-twenty-nine Seaview Street. And, uh, me and my wife, uh, uh, been texting all night. She's upset with me. My daughter ain't speaking to me because I'm trying to do what's right. WBA, I got a text message, uh, from my wife and my daughter, that a little boy sent me a porch, uh, a salt racle in a pile, where he had a blanket. And I've been having problems with his property, and I've been coming before the council. Don't we get him staying here tonight? I want a big detail. Uh, I have contacts from State Department, we've worked, enforcement, I have Richard, uh, Scott, I have Richard, Mr. Camp Lane, he's got people working on this, I'm going to go to Carter, I'm going to contact, uh, Mayor of Fair City, it's a good day. Uh, I got, uh, three beautiful grandchildren, I think you missed our family in the resolution. They shouldn't have to live like this. And it seems like this is going nowhere. The more I come, and try to defend itself, it really won't matter. But I know one day, 'cause I grew up in the streets of South Bend, nobody can tell me about these streets, I know about it. Uh, one day I'm going to get a call, and hoping that my grandchildren, my daughter, my wife is not killed, injured, or hurt, because if they do, I know I'm going to die in that. It's not going to keep going, I'm preaching, I'm begging, pleading about this drug house. And everybody's looking at me like this is a joke, but it's not going to be a joke. I'm pleading with you. Well, we got a contact. You gotta do something. I went to, uh, to make a lie to, uh, daddy, and worked with her father in the street, hanging out on the street, and he told me there was nothing we could do. There's, uh, she don't have control of the thugs, he can't talk to her. I'm pleading with you people. Please, please do something, because pretty soon, it's going to be the same. Trust me. And when you do, don't call me, don't talk to me. Uh, I don't, I don't have a problem with it. I didn't grow up in these streets. I know what it's like.
Fifteen seconds, sir.
All right, no problem. I, I pleaded, I hope you put in records. You can sit and ignore it, if you, if you're in the district, I'm tired.
Same with council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Child protective service.
Name and address, sir.
And everybody wait. See that? That's what's over the splash pad.
Name and address, sir.
Oh, absolutely.
For the record.
For the record, I'm Brad Goodchild, number one distance runner ever to come out of South Bend.
And address.
Eight thirty-seven South, Twenty-Fourth Street, South Bend, Indiana, four-six-six-one-five is my address.
Cool.
River Park, Warren Ray's.
Three minutes.
Splash pad. Overlooking the parking lot, kangaroo, that's the giraffe thirty-four. This was saved, saved people from a terrible storm, maybe had two weeks, with no, nothing going on at the park because of the down lines. This is, uh, rendition of the six animals that we're trying to get for the welcome sign. That's miniature. That's only twelve foot. We're talking about fifty foot, like Mishawaka has, next to, uh, Marahfield by the river. That's the kangaroo, they called me, the Australian Outback. This is another one of the sculptures here, and that's the one, the pride, the little kids put the nail polish on when we had at the park, uh, you know, your, and, uh, the original one, uh, in Padawan. Anyways, I come to you because three things happened to me this week. And you say, well, what happened, Mr. Goodchild? Well, number one, as I was, uh, coming up to see Aaron Perry, to bring these things, I came back to the city, go, wow, I saw! And you say, what did you see? Welcome to South Bend. It was right there, the southernmost point, coming into South Bend. I says, oh my God, we got a welcome sign for South Bend. Wouldn't that be something, the oldest park, the oldest zoo in the entire state is right here in South Bend, Padawan. And we have a fifty-foot tree, fifty foot, it's the most beautiful oak in the entire park, sitting next to the fence. And you say, well, it was there in the fall, winter, spring, now it's summer, but it was going to be up by the third block of it. And that's, oh my God, July fifteenth. That's just a couple of weeks away. Why are you coming now? Well, it's still sitting by the fence. And you say, well, okay, I understand, you want the tree moved, so it can be put in cement, and then it can be carved, and because it was cut down, because that was the only choice we had, due to the fact that it was already, it's stone that we couldn't leave it where it originally was. Martin Luther King presentation, the statue, Father Jenkins got up and he said, you know, and Father Tedwitz got the call, he says, the time is now, I'll be there. What time do you want me there? Afterwards, I talked to President Jenkins, mentioned the fact that my godfather married my parents, was Father Sheehan, his mentor, and he says, my God, Goodchild, this is a project, we can appreciate your, Ron.[1635.82]